Call the Hadley Select Board meeting of June 12, 2024 to order. This is a hybrid meeting. And we have in attendance this evening Amy Parsons, Jane Nevin Smith, myself Randy Iser, acting chairperson as Molly is on vacation, and David Phil. In accordance with Mass General Law, Chapter 22 of the Acts of 2022, signed by the governor on February 15, 2022, I announced that this meeting of the Select Board is being recorded by Hadley Media, the Select Board's office via Zoom, and ask if there is anyone present who is also recording this meeting. Let the minutes reflect that nobody else has indicated that they are recording this meeting. Okay, we can move right on, right along to appointments. Item 2.1, Hadley Housing Authority Joint Meeting to do, take care of a vacancy appointment on the Hadley Housing Authority. So you guys need to come up front, please, and you're gonna have to call your meeting to order.
Is the applicant present online?
Crystal Jackson's not on this evening, no.
Okay, so she coming? I don't know, she...
Should we wait?
No, she is not coming.
Oh, she's not coming?
She's not coming.
She is not coming.
Can we just go ahead and on with this or not?
Go on with it, it's on the agenda.
We can.
I mean, we just assumed she wanted to be it because we have applications from her because otherwise it'd be like you grab somebody on the street and appoint them without them knowing.
I, she's not sending herself. Well, I think it's because y'all have met with her recently within the last few months for other boards that she's joined. I'm assuming that was her assumption.
So I'd like to, uh, I'm Teresa Spence-Fried on the Chair for Hadley Housing Authority Board of Commissioners. Uh, we will open our meeting with all of the preamble that, uh, Chair Iser already gave us. And we will do so by roll call. Again, Teresa Spence-Fried on the Chair of Hadley Housing Authority.
Member Rich Whitkis.
Member Sue Oppenheimer.
Okay, so the purpose of this joint meeting is to look at the application of Crystal Jackson to become a member of your committee and decide whether you want her to be on your committees.
Well, we don't have an applicant to ask questions. I just assumed you would have questions for the applicant as well. But you all know her. My understanding is she serves on, Crystal Jackson serves on four committees in town. Cultural, D E I, Library, uh, Department of the Library, and Housing and Economic Development. She's also up for a fifth slate, uh, slate, uh, part of slate, um, broadband uh, task force or committee this evening. She's well known in town. Uh, she is well respected. And I think she's probably a very, would make a very, very good addition to the Board of Commissioners for Hadley Housing Authority.
So my question is, you all have terms and they stagger. Which term will she be taking?
Well, there's only one term up, and my understanding was the Select Board would appoint for the first year of the five-year term vacancy.
That was my question.
And then next spring, uh, she would, uh, run on the ballot as an incumbent for the remainder of the five-year term, which is for four years.
Okay.
I move that we appoint Crystal Jackson to the Hadley Housing Authority.
Second. Okay, motion by Jane, second by David. Any further discussion from the Select Board? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And then from my board?
Favor.
Favor.
Aye. It's unanimous.
There you go.
Okay.
Thank you for the meeting.
Close your meeting.
Yes, thank you so much.
You're welcome.
Ms. Nevin Smith, and I move that we close the meeting, or adjourn our meeting.
Thank you.
Now, are you going to second?
Second.
Let's have a vote.
Favor.
All right, great. Thank you all very much. Have a good evening. Okay, next up on the agenda is item 3.1, Public Comments. Is there anybody here or on Zoom that would like to make a public comment?
That's Amy.
Amy Feiden.
Hello, how are you today?
Good.
Hi, hi. So I'm here, I want to discuss the new position being created, HR Assistant Town Administrator, and why I think it's a bad idea to do right now. We just finished budget season and the department head supplied a budget to the Town Administrator and Finance Committee. Most, if not all, were cut, some as much as half of the wish list. That, what we passed at town meeting was a level service budget. No new positions were created. First, where is this money coming from? Finance Committee, Town Administrator, Treasurer, we reviewed every line item, and we were not flushed with cash nor have extra money lying around. A new position like this should be discussed through a budgeting process, not one month after town meeting. Second, most important, what kind of message are we sending to the staff? It's been a few years now and we tell our non-union employees, hold tight. We are doing a compensation study to address your concerns. At the same time, we're telling them that budget is tight. Last year, uh, we addressed the Town Administrator and gave a significant increase in salary. Now you are looking to give the Town Administrator an assistant and wonder why all these new unions are being formed. This does not seem fair. I feel that before we create any new positions, we take care of our current, uh, many long-term employees. In my opinion, that, um, you should wait until after fall town meeting. At that time, the budget will have been reviewed, our current employees' compensation will have been taken care of. Um, and if you need an HR person right now and immediate to fill the spot, then my suggestion is to subcontract this out as a temporary position within the budget.
Thank you.
Well, and she fell off. I think that was the bad with Hadley Internet.
Okay.
I've got good internet.
She's coming back.
Well, Amy, are, Amy, are you coming back? We, we lost you.
Oh, she's... You lost me, you lost me.
Yes, we did.
Oh, did you hear any of it?
Oh, yeah.
Oh, yeah.
I think most of it.
Okay, so I basically just think we should wait until town meeting. And if we need a temporary person, we do it within what our budget has, and we do a 1099 like we've done in the past. And then after, um, town, fall town meeting, we can, uh, bring this back to discussion. That's my opinion. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Amy. Appreciate it. You know we can't talk about it, right?
Well, I know you're not gonna talk about it with me, but I know you're gonna talk about it because it is on the agenda tonight.
Yeah, I just want to make sure you understand, we can't respond to you.
That's fine.
Okey dokey, thank you. Anybody else with a public comment? See none, we'll move on. All business, item 4.1, Digital Equity Steering Committee Charge and Appointment. Alex, is that yours?
I'm kind of looking for, can't find it. All right, so we have the 11th member, her name is, um, Linda Mil-
Michael.
Michaelopoulos. Um, and then we have, um, Jennifer Sanders James, Crystal Jackson, Jane Nevin Smith, Susan Brown, uh, from the library, Andy McKenzie, Amy Feiden, Kyle Dragon, and Ronald Mandler.
Ronald or Roland?
What says Roland?
Roland, so I apologize, Roland Mandler.
Okay.
Motion to approve those people to the committee?
To appoint?
Appoint.
Second term.
Okay, we have a motion by David.
Hold on one second, I gotta amend that. For the term of the project.
Oh, okay.
Good, yes.
Okay, motion by David, second by Jane. Any further discussion?
Can I vote? I'm on the list.
You're on, yeah, you can, you can vote. Yeah, all right, hearing no further discussion, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion passage unanimously. Okay. Thank you, Alex.
Yep.
Item 4.2, Assistant Town Administrator, Human Resource Director. I guess Carolyn, that's for you to tell us about.
All right, you had asked, uh, I know Jane had asked the last meeting to add one, after some of the edits that you reviewed, to add self-directed in that job description, which I did do. Thank you. Um, what I also included was, uh, you had asked for some comparisons. Those are three of the towns that were on the compensation studies, the towns that were used as comparisons. So I included, you had looked, asked for the Town Administrator and Manager was getting, and then what the ATA, the Assistant Town Administrator, HR Director, is getting. So I included that, but that's for FY '25. Um, to answer, I, I do, would like just to clarify a few things that, um, we have looked at, um, uh, the cost of, of, of doing this, and there have been, uh, cost savings in the budget that would, obviously would all have to be, um, with the comp study and with this position, it's all up to the town voters at, um, at a at town meeting. Uh, this, uh, I just want to clarify too, we did not, there were no departments that were reduced by 50%, um, as Amy stated. I just want to clarify, we did really well this year, and we did not cut budgets. We, there were some increase in requests, um, that we looked, we did not do, such as training, very minimal. It was, you know, it's, uh, very consistent through the boards. There was no positions were cut, no, nothing, no, uh, departments were, were cut. So I just wanted to clarify that. So that, the range that you would, you would, you were asking tonight of what the recommendation for the range would be. This is not from me, this is from the, the task that you gave me to do. And so I reached out to the Collins Center, I also reached, uh, 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 got the, what, those, those comparisons that I gave you. Um, and when I spoke with Mary at the Collins Center, um, based on her, uh, reviewing, um, what those departments are, what departments are getting across other communities for the ATA, and as well as, um, what the responsibility of that person is. She, uh, recommended that there be a range, and it would go within the same grade as the DPW Director, um, that, uh, so it would be, even though it's a, it's a department head position, she just wanted to emphasize while she's, why that position is not the boss of the department heads, uh, the Assistant Town Administrator, uh, Town Administrator will be operationally and function, have functional authority over many aspects of the work, and will act in the Town Administrator's place as needed, which has more accountability and complexity to the work. Uh, so she, um, it recommended a range, and it can be posted as a range, but, uh, that's the information I gave you. The, the range would be nine, um, 96,361 to 125,388. So that's minimum to high, so.
What's, what's the current HR Director position salary?
Um, Jones here, I think it's 80, it'll be 25, it'll be 84.
Currently it is at 82.5. I'm sorry, 82.8.
Thank you.
And I did want to clarify, um, also that, uh, town employees that were not a part of the union that, but were entering that new union for the companies, uh, for the municipal employee did get a 6% increase last year. And you also gave them longevity as well.
Right.
So this evening, what, what are we looking to do here? To approve this position or the, the, uh, description of the position?
I think you approved the description based on me adding that.
Right.
So.
Okay.
So I think we should go out to bid for this position because I don't think the town will function well without someone in this position.
Are we agreeing on the salary range?
Yeah.
I think it's like most things, comp, uh, what is the word, compensate with experience.
I would just like to set the bottom level of that range a little bit lower. I was thinking like 80.
Well, I should start where we currently were with the, the HR person.
But he came in with a lot of experience.
Right, yeah. My only concern is that we just gave the HR Director a higher salary versus the previous HR Director, a higher salary than the one before him. And, you know, he, he had a decent amount of certifications and experience and whatnot, but when, until it gets down to hiring and we decide whether we're going after somebody who's concentrating more on HR or more on the Assistant Town Administrator aspect of things, you know, um, I don't know, I think it, it just gives us a little bit more flexibility to make that hiring decision. It's not saying that we're gonna start him at 80, but if we have someone that's a good candidate we really like, that maybe doesn't have quite as much of the experience as, you know, an experienced HR person did or would have, just a little more flexibility.
Well, the other thing is if we started that number, it's already in the budget, we don't have to look for the money.
Wait, there is money ident, there is funding that was identified, that we had cost savings in two different areas.
Right.
Uh, support staff in the Town Administrator's budget as well as, um, we saved a significant amount with our accounting. So certainly we would not have pursued this without.
I, I like David's thought process in that if we set the, the low end at 96, and we don't get somebody that's worth 96, but we'd like to hire them, uh, we're kind of stuck. So we can always come up, we can't go down.
Agreed.
Is there a range you'd like me to place in there, David or Randy?
Man, I was thinking 80 as a bottom number, which is a little bit lower than what we're currently at. Uh, what was the high end that you?
125 something or others.
Okay, that is very high.
That's extremely high.
Well, and I'm also looking at these other numbers and the, if you will, um, where they fall relative to the Hadley Town Administrator salary. They're all much higher than we're paying Carolyn. So I think that what they're paying an ATA is gonna be much higher than what, if we're looking at the quality.
But they are also much larger towns too.
Exactly. Um, so I'd say 80 to 100 for starters.
What, what does the DPW Director currently make? Sorry, Joan.
I'd, I'd have to look, I wouldn't want to throw it out there. I'm looking at 24, 104 or 5, something like that, yeah.
Because I know that there's a ton of licenses and certifications, that position has to have as well as experience, so, uh, you know, although we want someone experienced, we also don't want to upset everybody, all the other department heads by saying, hey, we're gonna, you know, blow this out of the water by starting super high.
Yeah, I, I think we, we definitely need the help in this area. Um, I'm just concerned that, I mean, we're, we're pricing this so that Carolyn doesn't, you're not gonna have a job because this person's gonna do everything you're doing. That's what I'm reading here. So that makes me a little concerned. I would think that it would be, this position would be someone who's going to help and take your place if you're not there. Not, uh, and which, I mean, I realize it could be any time for any amount of time, but my thought is that it's going to be minimally needed to take your place and just to be there to help you. Uh, and to, as I said earlier in, in this conversation, uh, I think the human resources aspect of it is the most important.
So the way I read it is the person would have the qualifications to do anything that Carolyn does so that she can say, I'm really busy working on this, would you take care of that?
Yeah.
And then they can pick that up. And I see that as a really valuable asset for the amount of stuff that happens in the Administrator's office and stuff.
You, you might want to, you might want to change the job description.
To call it.
Um, I think if you read the job description, it's, it's, you're gonna have difficulty. So you might want to modify that.
If you read the job description, we're gonna have difficulty with what, Carolyn?
Filling the position at 80,000. HR Directors are not, uh, even looking at jobs at 80,000. I'm just giving a reality check in, you're a call, absolutely, but we can do it, but you're, you're gonna, you'll have, you'll get what you pay for.
But also, well, two things. One is, like Randy's, Randy's focusing on the HR, right? And I think HR is important, but I also think that it's, it's important that the person takes some stuff off of your plate and off of Jennifer's plate, and then that, that has been just overwhelmed by doing it all alone. So we might not be able to make that decision, you know, looking at two candidates, is it more important we have a very qualified Assistant Town Administrator? Or is it more important we have a somewhat qualified HR person until it comes down to making that hiring decision? So, and maybe we put it out there and see what we get, and if we have the range, then it gives us that flexibility. Um, the concern I have with the one, was it 125 is the top of the range? Not saying we're never gonna give you a raise again, but that puts them right up against you, very close to what you're making, and so for their progression in the future, let's just say at some point you say, all right, I'm gonna retire. Now they're taking on all of your responsibilities and, and that come along with your position, and they're gonna make an extra three grand for that from what they're making now. It's, it seems like a very small.
It's, that's more based on what you're paying me.
Right.
But I, don't, if you can take my salary out of it
Yeah.
and look at what the job should be
Right.
paid, that's, that's another issue. And that's what, when, when we did my contract negotiations, it was gradual to get this position, so when I do leave,
Right.
you aren't gonna have a huge hit on your budget.
Right.
So don't look at my position and what, and compared to mine. I think you should look at what that position is and to bring in somebody who can provide that. You certainly don't want a, a, a beginner.
We don't want a person.
Coming in, that's not gonna be helpful, to you. It's not gonna help to you or the next Town Administrator in three or four years.
We agree, we don't want a beginner. On the other hand, we took a percentage of the average in the area for our other staff, and we need to consider if that is an option for what's going on here. Mm-hmm. So I think we, I think we should start low, we can always go up. I like David's idea.
Fair enough, I'd go as low as 80,000 though.
Yeah, I, I, I agree that 80, I think 80's too low since we were paying the HR Director 83.
But that was your full-time, and we're talking part-time. So.
Yeah, but we're not, we're not paying a, an HR Director this much money and Assistant A, uh, Town Administrator. We're not, we're not separating that, it's all one.
Right.
So.
So what do you propose?
Well, I'm he's thinking. Yeah, he's thinking. I, I think 80's too low. I agree with Carolyn that it's gonna be tough to get somebody the low end.
Like 87 to 97. I like sevens, sorry.
Lucky seven?
Lucky sevens, but.
Can we set it at the current HR Director salary, at least at the bottom, and then we have the flexibility? I just don't. I mean, Troy had a lot of certifications and experience and whatnot, so.
But we are asking for, you, there are directors out there who will do both, who have Troy's certifications and more.
Right.
But not for 80.
Right.
Yeah, because we're, I mean, we're also, I know that in our minimum qualifications, you know, we have that, but we also have a preferred professional HR, PHR, SHRM-CP certification on there.
That's what I was saying, if you want us to change the job description, take some of those out.
I, I do kind of think some of those may be able to come out of there because those certifications are more along the lines of somebody that does full-time, everyday HR for a large organization and yes, an HR person has a lot of work to do, but they're not strictly HR. So I think having some HR certifications and some of the, some of the ability to do Town Administrator work is, is important, and you may have somebody that is only an expert in HR with all those certifications versus somebody that might be a little bit more versatile.
And I think when you're, when you're screening those applications, you wouldn't pick somebody who's just heavy on one side, you would want to bounce. There's, there's applicants out there, and that's what you're typical if you were to look, because we, I was, got a whole sheet from the, um, HR Directors listserv, and there's a lot, most Assistant Town Administrators are, they do partially HR Director as well.
So the, in fact, that bottom line says is preferred, it doesn't say is required. All those certifications.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
Or we could just cut that whole Master's Degree of Professional HR certification with all the alphabet S's. Out, totally out.
That might be a good idea because that might give us some more of a variety of candidates, obviously. In, when it comes time to making the hiring decision, somebody with those certifications is, might be looked at more favorably, but you might have people that are, let's face it, people see preferred, and it deters them from applying a lot of times if they don't have all those, so.
All right, so if we're talking about a lower salary from what is shown on our screen here, and we think that that's not gonna work, I move that we take that line out of the job description.
Can I just, why don't you let me post it with your salary first, as it says preferred?
Because sometimes when you do that, people say, oh, Hadley, and they look at it and they say no, and then it comes up later with a change, and they're not gonna look again. I think we'd be better off just to take this out and just David said, if somebody shows up and they have the degrees, that's great.
What's your concern, Carolyn?
Nope, I'm good.
No, you're not good, nope, speak.
It's really hard because I, I didn't initiate this, this was initiated by the board, but I'm doing all the homework for you.
Yeah.
No one is going to apply as an H, a Assistant Town Administrator with HR responsibilities for 80,000.
We understand that.
And I think, but what, what, especially, I think Molly initiated this, what she was looking for is to have somebody at the level who can take on sophisticated projects for assistance, and I think that, um, you will, if, if, if that job description changes, you're, I think you'll get less qualified people.
So your concern is the salary range, not taking out the, the qualification?
Yeah, that was what I meant by suggestion, taking out qualifications. Um, it, I think you'd have to, maybe the board needs to meet again and discuss what is your priority? Is it HR, or is it, um, Assistant Town Administrator, and really understanding what that means
Mm-hmm.
and deciding what is your priority?
Yeah.
Uh, because I think that's, the way we're talking now, it's, it will impact whether you're gonna have somebody who's got that project management ability, work in a municipal environment to get revenues, um, I'm sorry, to get projects completed. So I think, um, I, I'm thinking about the effort to do all this and what your original purpose of that job was.
Mm-hmm.
I don't, I think you might be spinning your wheels.
Okay, so based on what you just said, and the fact that this was Molly's baby, so to speak, I think I would like to discuss this when all five members are here and, and decide what, what we really want to put the weight on as to HR or Assistant Town Administrator. So then we can, then we can finish this up. That make sense? Would be good with that?
So table.
Okay, so we'll table that?
Good.
Thank you. All right. Moving right along, item 5.1, New Business, DPW Interim Supervisor Appointment. Scott McCarthy was supposed to be here, but he cannot. He's got another meeting, so Carolyn, would you kind of give a short overview?
I can, yeah.
Some stuff here.
Yeah, so this is for, as you know, this position has been vacant for a while. We've advertised with, and nothing has, um, there has been no applications, or if there were, they were not qualified. Um, and so, um, there is an in-house candidate, part of the union, uh, Ted Casey, who is shown an interest in taking on this position with an agreement between, uh, Scott and Ted, that this would be a temporary position, and at the end of 90 days to be able to look at it and say, um, Ted has the ability, this, we've got a, I've got a side letter of the agreement from the union to say, this isn't what I thought it was gonna be, or this, that's not what I want. And also, if he wasn't performing up to the standard that, for this position, that Scott could say, um, with, with no grievance, you need to go back to your other position. So it was a very amicable discussion with the union, and, um, so this is a, this is asking for authorization for that.
Isn't that one, is it for the town?
So Ted came to us, I, if I remember correctly, he came from out of town, um, So Ted came to us, I, if I remember correctly, he came from out of town, um, and was working with us for about five months. And then I think a higher paying position at a neighboring town came up and, you know, it's one of those situations you start and you say, why did I leave? It was, and so he came back when there was an opening and he's just been showing level of interest in wanting to move up and be more responsible. He's been doing it a little bit temporarily right now and really doing a great job.
I know Scott's pleased with his performance.
Yeah.
All right. Uh, I'll make a motion, um, that we appoint Ted Casey as interim DPW supervisor for a period of ninety days, retroactively effective June third, twenty twenty-four.
Okay, motion by Amy, second by Jane. Any further discussion?
Do we also need to approve this side letter of agreement separately?
Um, no, I don't think there's, is there a signature for the select board? I don't think so.
No, obviously.
Town of Hadley.
Town of Hadley.
I can sign that. I typically sign those.
Okay, so that's the, no. Okay, so again, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed, motion passes unanimously. All right, item five point two, Atkins, I assume VLF is Valley Land Fund and APR, um, so Jonathan Carr is requesting select board approval as co-owner on the APR for a pump house on his property. Do we have anybody here to tell us, talk to us about this?
Didn't he come to us before and we said you had to go through these steps because it was a GR land?
I think he has.
He, he did, I'm sorry, may I ask?
Sure.
Um, so this is, um, he's already been to APR for this. He had come to y'all in the past for a hoop house, but he also had gone through APR before he brought that to y'all. Um, this felt very standard and routine. Um, all of the information is there. And y'all are listed as co-holders. The town is listed as co-owner on the APR, so they just need approval as a co-owner.
I move we approve it.
Um, second.
Okay, motion by Jane, second by Amy. Any further discussion?
So this is at the Carr Center House?
It's up on the mountain.
Okay.
It's, it's the property up, up on Mount Warner.
Yeah.
The orchard.
Okay.
Okay. Oh, any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Motion passes unanimously. Okay, item five point three, library trustee vacancy appointment.
Is there anyone else here for that?
Yes.
Good evening.
Good evening. I'm Julie Rose and I'm, um, hoping to become a library trustee. I have, um, I feel the library is an essential part of the community and I've been working on the Hattie Cultural Council for six years. Like being part of a team, I like advocating for things and I would be pleased to be appointed. Thank you.
Okay. And we have somebody from the, is somebody from the library here to?
You got all those new plants watered? They look nice.
They need more.
Wait till Friday.
Yes.
I am Lynn Latham. I am chair of the library trustees. Um, we met last night and voted unanimously on Julie's candidacy. I will add that Patrick, the library director, and I met with her at four o'clock this afternoon just to do sort of a more in-depth orientation and she asked very good questions, which bodes well.
Okay. All right, I just wanted to make sure that you guys were in favor of her. Okay, any questions from the select board?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Okay, motion by Jane, second by David. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously. Welcome.
Congratulations.
Welcome.
Thank you.
You are not so terrible.
Some days, right?
Some of us.
Some days.
Can't wait till you get Jane home. Okay, item five point four, Goodwin Memorial Building and Town Hall Project. That's Carolyn, you've got something to tell us about that?
I do. So, um, I don't know if you had a chance to read the proposal that I'm submitting tonight, but I'll, I'll give you a summer, summary. Um, as you know, uh, the Goodwin Memorial Project that was, um, approved in two thousand twenty has not moved forward for various reasons. It was COVID, it was the building materials costs, um, absence of really a staff to coordinate a comprehensive, um, municipal office renovation project. So, um, it is definitely getting underutilized right now. We certainly don't want to have it just sit there. So, um, I, I would like to propose, there is, there's an issue, a broad issue for the town, and that's office space and storage space. I think we have the square feet for it between the Goodwin and the town hall, but I think we need a professional to do a study on what's needed. And it's very common. I gave you an example of a community who had that done. Um, that, just to give the town an idea of what, how that could be utilized much better and to continue to progress towards saving that building as well as saving the town hall. You know, we're doing baby steps, you know, with the windows and the exterior. Um, so how do we pay for that? So in two thousand twenty, at the annual town meeting, uh, two hundred and twenty-six thousand dollars um, and some change was, uh, from the Community Preservation, the general fund, um, to renovate the Goodwin Memorial Library. Presently, there's a little over two hundred thousand left. The other, other part of that had gone to some architectural fees, but that was just for the memorial school. I'm sorry, just for, um, the Goodwin Memorial. Um, and then twenty-five thousand dollars was also allocated from COVID to do, to look at the ADA accessibility and the heavy elevator. Um, I did check with our town council to see how those, uh, motions were worded to find out if in fact we could take some of those funds to hire a architectural engineering firm to do, I, I know the town hates to hear feasibility study, but we, it will help us progress to do a feasibility space, study of office space and storage space um, at the two buildings as a whole, you know, could some departments collectively, I know there was some original design on what was thought, what departments would be the best at the Goodwin, but I think to have a professional come in, which is what they do, is look at, uh, how the department makeups are, understand municipal government, how they function, what offices might work together, how you can consolidate, how to make it more efficient. And it really is just setting up what you, to set up, uh, teeing up for a, what it, what the town needs for space now and in the future, because right now we are having difficulty at the town hall as, uh, you know, positions are, um, taking on more responsibility, like our land use coordinator. Um, she's got a very tiny, tiny office. Uh, Linda has a, a small office and is hoping to fill, you know, has an assistant there now, but it's very, very small. So we have a lot of areas that, no kitchen at all, nowhere for anybody to go for lunch. So this is down the road. This is not immediate. But we are, we can use some of those, uh, any of those funds to help pay for this feasibility study. From there is when the town would start to decide what's next, what are the costs going to be? What's available? Because I know we have big projects coming up. This is not immediate, but I think you need to start as a town, looking at what the needs are going to be now, five years and ten years for office space and storage space.
What is your sense of the cost of this study?
I don't have a sense. Uh, it's not going to be this much money.
Okay, that was.
It's not gonna be that much money, but we don't.
For the Russell School study?
Oh, just forty, I think it's forty thousand.
Forty.
Yeah.
So that's a general sense of what?
Yeah, and you could even include some of that scope of work, like if it, uh, these, these are very dear buildings to the town in the center of the town. It's just so critical. Obviously, you want to keep it for the town, but if there's any others cultural things or anything to see if that could be used in, uh, the Goodwin.
So in your letter feasibility study, on the paragraph that starts on June twentieth, the last sentence, do we have two hundred thousand dollars left or twenty thousand dollars?
You have two hundred and one thousand dollars, nine hundred and fifty-seven dollars, seventy cents in that. Then we have twenty.
Zero.
Yeah, yeah, there's a zero. You're, you're, you left a zero out then. Two hundred, comma, zero, zero. So I didn't know if you moved the comma or left out a zero.
I was being, I, I was kind of estimating too. I did get the, yeah.
Okay, I just wanted to be clear on that.
I'll fix that.
So one thing I think is important that we ask them for when they, if they're not going to do, do this already is a flex office space that can be used temporarily. For example, when we're building a DPW and the office staff may need to relocate temporarily for construction, um, you know, we need to remodel the superintendent's office, something like that, because yeah, we have to worry about our permanent departments, but we also have a constant need for temporary space as different departments are moving and things are happening.
You, you guys would pick the scope of work.
Yeah.
And there's nobody, I haven't chosen anybody. I wouldn't do that unless, um, so we, I would, I would have to do some more due diligence. I would actually contact this firm to get a general idea of what that looks like, what the cost could be. Because sometimes you can just say, we've got square feet here in town hall, and they can kind of give you an estimate based on their past projects, but we would, doesn't mean we go with them. It would just help to find the scope of work.
Understood. So what you're saying is you're going to do a little homework for us, get, get us an idea what this study might cost with the understanding that it's not an exact figure.
Mm-hmm.
And then we will decide whether we want to move forward with it or not.
And what we want included in the study.
So we have two hundred thousand dollars from the two hundred and twenty-six thousand?
Mm-hmm.
And then on top of that, we have the twenty-five.
Yes.
So it's, so we essentially have two hundred and twenty.
Yes, because the reality is you're, you will have to do an elevator at both buildings.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay, so we'll wait to hear further information on that one. Thank you. Item six one, town administrators report.
And my apologies, I don't, I don't have one.
Okay.
Okay, that's, that's fine.
We did one last week. We only expect it every two weeks.
Okay.
All right.
Thank you.
Item seven, select board members liaison report. Anybody have anything?
No, I was, I was, uh, contacted by Patrick from the library and we're looking to set up some time to meet. So.
Okay, cool. All right. Item eight point one, announcements, and I guess I get to be the announceer this evening. So I would, we're gonna, uh, give condolences to the families of Merle Buckout and Barbara Hendricks, who both passed away in the past week or so. Uh, both ladies were lifelong residents of Hadley. Merle Buckout was a teacher at Hopkins. Barbara Hendricks was a librarian at Hopkins for quite some time. And as I knew them, they were Mrs. Buckout and Mrs. Hendricks. So condolences to their families.
Service for, uh, Merle Buckout is tomorrow, first church.
Okay, thank you. Okay, anybody have anything else for announcements? All right, so now we are on item nine, which is executive session. See if I can make this work. All right.
Unless you want me to read it.
She's good.
Go ahead, Amy.
All right, I'd like to make a motion to move into executive session pursuant to Mass General Law, Chapter thirty A, Section twenty-one A three, to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining or litigating if an open meeting law may have detrimental effect on the um, bargaining or litigating position of the public body for the compensation study, the municipal employee union and firefighter union, um, as well as to conduct, um, strategy sessions in preparation for contract negotiations with non-union personnel, um, town treasurer, and we will not be reconvening in open session.
Second.
Very nicely done. Thank you so much.
You're welcome.
Okay, so Amy motioned, Jane second. As chair of the Hadley Select Board, I state that the board has moved and seconded, seconded to enter into executive session and that I state that discussing the matter in open session will have a detrimental impact on the bargaining position of the town of Hadley. Could I have a roll call vote, please?
Roll call vote, Phil?
Yes.
Isar?
Yes.
Nevin Smith?
Yes.
And Parsons?
Yes.